And go ahead and get started without her. If we call the meeting to order, and will the secretary please call the roll call?
Eric Alderedi.
Here.
Phil Becerra.
Here.
Bruce Bauer.
Here.
James Gartner.
Here.
Mark McLaughlin.
Here.
Beatrice Mendoza. Lynette Verino.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. You can all stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin.
My pledge of allegiance is as far as the United States of America and to a colored religious stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna move to consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. We have public comments at this moment. If you have any public comments on non-agendized items, this would be the opportunity you have to get up and speak. This would be for non-agendized items, anything that's not on the agenda for tonight. Thank you. We're gonna move on to consent calendar, and I will entertain a motion from my colleagues.
Since the rung was continued, does that become an agendized item or not an agendized item?
No.
A number of us would like to speak on it.
At this time, nothing has been continued. None of the agendized items have been continued. Do I have a motion? Your motion, second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can you oppose? Thank you. We're gonna try to move this along, and in order to do that, I know we have some items that may take longer than others. So I'd like to move item number three, which is the Public Hearing for Conditional Use Permit 2016-38, to item number one. That's okay?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Before you is application conditional use permit number 2016-38. This is for a new Aldi grocery store, and the application is actually for an off-sale alcohol license. The location of the store will be at 2840 South Bristol Street. So, a little bit of the project description. The applicant is proposing to sell alcoholic beverages for off-site or off-premise consumption at a grocery store, which is currently going through tenant improvements. The application does require an approval of a conditional use permit. The site description, so this parcel is located in the community commercial, the C1 Zone. It is surrounded by residential and commercial uses throughout. As you can see, the location of the arrow, or the site arrow, is pointing at the north side of the property where the Aldi location will be located. This is a site plan. As you can see, it's on the northwest corner of Bristol Street and Seagerstrom. And the square will illustrate the location of the Aldi location. Just below that is the existing Burlington Coke Factory Store. This is a floor plan looking south. The red box will signify the location of the proposed alcohol. As you can see on the table in the square above, the alcohol sales area is only proposed to have 26 square feet, and this is less than 1 percent. This location was actually a previous Albertson's store location, and also had alcohol for off-premise. The project will provide an added service to the residents and visitors of the area, and it'll create a one-shop-stop location, positively influence the economic stability of the property, and it'll offer a different variety of products within the store, and that will promote a higher economic influence and stability in the area. So the standards of the Santa Ana Municipal Code will help mitigate any potential negative impacts. And with that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit number 2016-38. This concludes my presentation. I will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ivan, do they have questions? Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What kind of license are they looking to obtain?
They're actually looking to obtain a type 20, so it would be beer and wine.
Just beer and wine. Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
Ivan, just for clarification, so Burlington, are we splitting part of that building off to accommodate this new grocery store?
Right, you are correct. So Burlington is reducing the square footage. I don't know if it's a decrease in sales or not, but they are planning on giving a little bit of the square footage to that north part of the building, and then Aldi would take over almost 20,000 square feet there.
Do you know what the total is now, just from Burlington?
Not off the top of my head. I would have to look at the plans.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. This is the time and place for the public hearing on item number 2016-38. For the Aldi grocery store, if you wish to address the Planning Commission, please file a request to speak, form with the secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the chairperson. The action of the Planning Commission is final, following consent of the City Council, unless, if allowed by the Santa Ana Municipal Code, an appeal to the City Council is filed with the clerk of the council, and a copy is sent to the Planning Department within 10 days from the date of the Commission's action, or unless set for public hearing by the City Council. So, have we received any written communications? Presented the email that we received. Okay, thank you. We're gonna open up the public hearing, and I do not have any speaker cards for this item. So if you would like to speak, please come up and fill out a card. Saying none, thank you. We're gonna close the public hearing, and I will entertain any questions from commissioners or a motion.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Becerra?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number 2016-38.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Thank you. That motion carries. Gonna move on to item number two. Well, actually, this is going to be item number one on the agenda, and this is the Public Hearing for Zoning Ordinance Amendment 2016-05. So, do we have staff before?
Staff respectfully request that the Planning Commission consider continuing this item. We would like additional time. We've met with the community group, and we would like additional time to research some of the items related to it. And we hope that you will make a decision on continuing it to a date uncertain, which would allow us to renotice it as well.
Well, if I may?
Yes, Commissioner.
We'd like, if we continue this matter, if it's, if the other commissioners agree to entertain comment on the part of the public, because there's a lot of people that are present that may not be present at the continuation.
Well, if we should, then let's go ahead and open the public hearing, take in testimony, and then just continue the public hearing, as you said, to a date uncertain.
You can do that.
You can close the public hearing, and we will just renotice it as a separate public hearing.
Either or. I think we should take the testimony of those that made the trek out here this evening.
I agree. I agree. If there's consensus. Yeah. Public comments are already closed, so I think that, I agree that we should open the public hearing, hear the comments, and then we'll close that. Now, does that jeopardize anything if it should come back in, I don't know, 30 or 60 days? Would we then have another public hearing?
Yes, there would be a second public, another public hearing would be advertised and renoticed so that we could have public input again.
Sounds great. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and then open the public hearing for zoning ordinance amendment 2016-05, and I have quite a few speaker cards. So if we could just keep to, since we have, a lot of people would like to speak, please keep to the three-minute time limit. The yellow light on the monitor in front will indicate that your time is coming up. The red light will indicate that your time is up, so please adhere to the three-minute rules. Thank you. The first speaker I have is Irma Haraglan. You're gonna pass on it? Thank you. Thank you for coming. I have now Caesar Corrubius. Cesar? I'm sorry if I misspoke.
Good evening, Chairwoman and Planning Commissioners. Cesar Corrubius with the Kennedy Commission. We just wanna, again, express our gratitude for being invited to have this discussion about this important amendment to your zoning code. As you probably know, it's a issue of state law, that state law is requiring this local cities to look at their accessory units or second dwelling units and comply with those. So to the extent that it's gonna expand affordable housing, we'd like to consider the discussion on that. We also would wanna make sure that when you're moving forth on that, make sure you restrict it so that there is no use of, pardon me, of, I'm forgetting the term right now, but the, no term of short-term rentals, no use of short-term rentals, because a lot of the times you may see additional units come in the housing stock, but they're really used for business purposes, and that's probably not the environment that you wanna create. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Smollett.
Hello, Planning Commission. Good to be here. Nice to see some great people up there. I just wanted to say, you know, as someone who moved to Santa Ana three years ago, it's incredibly hard to find the kind of housing stock that fits me and my ability to work here and live here. I first had to move into a place that was too expensive, then was forced to move out of the city, and now we're back just up the street, but it's, we live in like an old granny condo from the 80s. So it's like, I think that families are changing, and there needs to be more variety of housing stock. I think that, you know, there's a lot, I have a lot of deference to the neighborhoods on this issue because it would obviously impact them, and so maybe how this is implemented is very important because it's a very balancing discussion of who's impacted. But I'm just saying, as someone who wanted to move to this city, who knows people who wanna live in this city, and I know people who live in garages in this city. And I've even lived in a house that the landlord illegally put people into our garage, and it ended up being bad for them, bad for the landlord, and bad for us. And so I think this is something that a lot of people are doing, that I think having a code for it and thinking about it responsibly and how it fits into the fabric of the city is a good thing, a good step forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Janelle Hardy.
Hello. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Janelle Hardy, President of Henninger Park Neighborhood. And I just wanna say that I'm not in favor of the of expanding on the state mandate, of building in park-poor areas. And I think we're gonna look at maybe even expanding park-poor areas in our city, redrawing that map, and increasing the size of the accessory dwelling unit. And just let me say that in my neighborhood, block by block, there are split lots that were once a single lot, that have one, have, you know, a split lot that was once a single-family home lot that now has been split, and there's like two or more homes on that lot. And that's almost every corner in my neighborhood. There's also legal granny flats, legal two-story homes that have been converted. You go block by block, we already have this density. So then my other concern is, you know, this might affect our tax base as a homeowner. You start getting these improvements, these larger accessory dwelling units, and there'll be a reassessment, and I think folks need to think about, you know, that, that they might be, the property taxes might go up. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. I have a speaker card for Mike Hardy.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. The State of California and the City of Santa Ana have determined that they want to increase the supply of affordable housing on the backs of single-family residential neighborhoods. The state has some mandates, and there's really not much we can do about that concerning parking setbacks and removing garage or cupboard space. Those are law. I mean, you can incorporate those into the proposed ordinance. What really concerns me is the city's wish list of staff-recommended changes. They're even more onerous and potentially destructive to our neighborhoods. The city wants to allow construction of these units in large areas of the city where there are not currently allowed. These areas are now designated as park-deficient. I think we should keep that designation of park-deficient and not necessarily allow accessory dwelling units in those areas, since we're so, so park-deficient in Santa Ana. The city wants to increase the allowable square footage of granny flats from 750 square feet to 1,200 square feet. Just wondering, how much room does granny require? These staff-recommended changes is their wish list, and they should be eliminated. I also wanted to mention to you, I dropped my wife off at a place over by the airport, and I used my navigation to get back here in a timely manner. And it took me on some streets like Van Ness, Parton, Highland. All those streets were highly impacted with parking, solid on both sides. You, the state has mandated that you can't take parking into consideration. Okay, that's fine. Can't do anything about that, but you don't need to encourage more secondary dwelling units, more accessory dwelling units, no more granny flats. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Chris Schmidt.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Chris Schmidt. I am the Vice President of the Windsor Village Neighborhood Association. I'm here tonight to speak about a few items. As I'm sure you're quite aware, Santa Ana has been identified as the second-densest city in the State of California, right behind San Francisco. We're 27.2 miles. I don't believe we're expanding anymore. We have over 330,000 residents. My concern is, we're going to be putting more people in the same 27.2 square miles. As you are aware, several people have already stated, we're park-deficient. I tried to find the map. Apparently, there's a map of the park-deficient areas, and I couldn't locate it today. I believe we're supposed to have two acres of open space for every 10,000 residents, and I believe we're under one acre right now. I'm hoping you'll consult with the Director of Parks and Recs on this, Gerardo Mowet, and ask him where we currently are. And to add on what Janelle said, by adding square footage to a house, you're increasing property value. So you're not creating more affordable housing. You're actually increasing the property value of that house. Those people are gonna have to pay more taxes as well. Again, I think a lot of people have discussed parking. We have an apartment complex 1,000 feet from my neighborhood, and we have people parking in our neighborhood. Trying to get parking permits in this city is very, very difficult. Trying to reach that 66 percent threshold on your street is difficult, especially if you have renters living on your street. So again, the last thing I would like to state is, a few months ago, Hassan Hagani, the Director of Planning, came to the ComLink meeting to discuss the granny flats. And I remember him stating that neighborhoods could opt out of this. Once the city does the rezoning, we would have the option to opt out. I would hope you would make sure that that language is included when we amend the zoning, if neighborhood associations will still have the option to opt out of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Irma Macias.
Good evening. My name is Irma Macias, living in the city for over 40 years, and watching grow our neighborhoods, specifically some of the, in the middle of the city, which I've seen growing and growing and growing, the population, but not the living quality or quality of life for these individuals. Today, I'm here to let you know that I'm opposed to this item. The reason is because, as it is, we have so much overcrowding, parking, the fighting among neighborhoods' residents because of, we don't have parking. Some neighborhoods are crowded with apartments, and I don't think this is specifically for one neighborhood. I hope that if it is, in their heads to put this item on the agenda and pass it, make sure that it's all the way in every single neighborhood in Santa Ana, not only, because I'm sure the ones more affected is gonna be the people low-income. And the reason is that we have, as it is, people renting and subleasing their own homes. We have about three, four families living in a household with a quality of life so deplorable that they are renting a couch, they're renting a corner, they're renting a garage, and what kind of quality of life is that for an individual? So I'm not in favor. I'm here to support any other options, but if it's for everyone in the city, every single neighborhood, the north, the south, the east, and the west, because as it is, there is not gonna be no change for the area down south on First, from Standard to Fairview and First to Edinger. There is no change there. Money comes from the state. For every improvement, and guess what? The residents are the same. The areas are the same. Not a single penny goes to these individuals. To make it better, we have no parks. The areas we have are so poorly divided that I'm here to say no, and please think twice what the decisions, how it's affecting the community. It is horrible. To see individuals coming to you and say, you know what, I have this issue, and it's nothing you can do because you come forward, the council, and it's nothing that they do. Council members, they don't set a foot on every meeting that we have. We have these individuals up there to care of the people they represent. Guess what? They don't attend meetings. They don't care. As soon as they get up there, they don't do absolutely anything. It's you that they send you to do their job. Don't be one. Please help us and say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Debbie McEwen.
Good evening. Where do I start? I think I would like to start with the fact that the, we're in SD 19. The fact that the state just trampled on that as if our districts and means just nothing to them. And I find that very unpleasant. Listening to, listening, I think I'll just go some bullet points, listen for the other speakers. The first gentleman said he didn't want Airbnb to be able to, he didn't want it, he wanted a granny flat, not an Airbnb. Well, let's try regulating that, shall we? That'll never happen in a million years. Irma, Irma touched on a raw nerve, and she said people are renting couches and garages and chicken sheds and whatever else that put a roof over their heads. We get that, and that's not a good thing. But if you've been out in those neighborhoods where we live and where we invested, this is what we know. You could build 10,000 units tomorrow, and there would still be people coming here looking for whatever. I don't know why Santa Ana is the magnet for this, but at this moment in time, it is. And you know, I'm not exaggerating. 1,000, 5,000, 10,000 low-income units. Every last one of them would have bodies in them, and more, and asking for more. So when you're weaving your way through this minefield, what do we build, and why do we build it, and why is it in the City of Santa Ana? Enough. You know, we're dealing with the vast overcrowding. Whether we built another, one new house or 1,000 new houses, we're still grossly overcrowded. We have gangs. Because we are the county seat, we have so many of the drug and alcohol rehab houses. All of this is protected stuff. Whatever happened to Joe Homeowner or just the random neighborhood guy? And I believe that the city and the electeds have somehow got caught up in that churning to think that we have to provide, we must provide. No, there's about, what, 48 other cities out there, however many there are, help me out. They too can provide. We do not have to be the one and only. We don't need to be the one and only. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a last speaker card for Javier Garcia.
Hey, good evening, Planning Commissioners. Great to be here on a Monday night. Can't think of anywhere else to be but here on a Monday night. Football game's on, but, oh wait, I'm recording it. My name is Javier Garcia, and just to state, I'm currently the Vice President of Washington Square Neighborhood Association, and on behalf of the board, we kind of wanna voice our opposition to this ordinance. And wanted to state, you know, I was born and raised here in the City of Santa Ana, downtown. I grew up in downtown. Most of my time is downtown here. Understand, complicated issue. It really is. I mean, hate to see folks, living conditions the way they are, but I agree with the previous speakers. We do have our fair share already. We have affordable housing. Yes, we need more, but I think that should be burdened by other cities as well, and not just us here in the City of Santa Ana. Most of you folks, you know, live here in the city, obviously, and you bought your house where you live for a reason. That's the reason I bought. Growing up here in downtown, I looked at Washington Square, great area, great neighborhood. I still love the neighborhood. I just hate to see what would happen if all of a sudden you start, we start developing different units throughout. Already, we have neighbors complaining to us on the board about overcrowding, cars parked. You know, we have permitted parking, and there's various issues associated with that. I just wanna basically mention our opposition to that. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other speakers on this item. We're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Yeah, absolutely. This is our original speaker, Irma.
I thought you were going to pass on this. Good evening, everybody. My name is Irma Haraglan. I'm the Vice President of the Walsher Square Neighborhood Association, also neighbor with Henninger Park. And with Irma Macias, I'm a local. I have been a resident of Santa Ana for 38 years. I'm also a Realtor and a financial planner. I'm very analytical, and I am also very passionate about our city. Truly understanding that affordable housing is necessary, but that is something that the whole county should be looking at, and then not sacrificing the least of the ones that can afford it on their backs. Because yes, it's a mandate, but with that comes irresponsibility of parking, infrastructure, safety, police, schools that were in terror in our neighborhoods, the safety of the neighborhoods. It would destroy them, because some of the people who have worked for 30, 40 years to pay for a single-family home, all of a sudden find the fabric of their neighborhood destroyed. You will have, it's, we have to really be considerate of that. We have no parks. We've, we fought, and I was one of the ones, and Janelle, we fought so hard to get the Pacific Electric Park because it's a miracle that we have empty land. So please consider. please consider. In the areas that have spaces, north on Fourth Street, there's some raw land. That's a place where the design could be appropriate, but not in the single-family zoned residence. You have, then you're destroying what was originally designed to be beautiful. Please consider that, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that's going to close our public hearing, and we're going to bring it back for any comments, or I'll entertain the motion. Mr. Bessera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first thing I want to do is thank everybody that came out tonight. I'm glad that you guys are showing some interest in some of the stuff that we tackle. I want to thank staff for proposing to continue this. The fact that our general plan and zoning subcommittee saw this for the first time, the same time that all my colleagues saw this, and the community saw it, all at the same time, four days ago. And I definitely, given an issue like this, this is not something that should be railroaded through so quickly. So, I just want to thank staff for taking the time to actually slow it down a little bit, and I hope that going forward, we'll have some public input and bring it back to the subcommittee, and then the commission, in a way that staff can really package everything as far as the input, and put something forward. And I understand that the state has mandated us to modify our existing second unit ordinance. But as many of the folks said to us today, we are the second densest, largest city in California. I mean, the only city ahead of us is San Francisco. We have double the density of Anaheim. We have three times the density of Irvine. I think we've done our fair share. Now, with that being said, I think that Santa Ana is, being the capital of Orange County, it is the urban core. And so, we are going to see these sorts of things happen. And we have an existing ordinance on the books, but we don't have a huge response to it. In fact, during our subcommittee meeting, staff informed myself and Commissioner McLaughlin that we had, what was it, forty-seven approved units?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, over a thirteen-year span. So, not exactly rushing to the gates on this. So, with that being said, yes, we do have a lot of overcrowding. This ordinance allows us to provide standards that standardize how these units were to be developed. And again, I think as some of the speakers spoke about, we need the enforcement. None of these rules mean anything if we don't enforce them. So, with that being said, I just, again, want to echo my appreciation for the public coming out and giving us your input, and for staff for slowing this down a little bit, and I look forward to seeing what comes back before us in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Aldred.
I won't belabor this. I think Commissioner Bessera explained it well. I think one of the things in the staff report I'd like to know about is if we haven't estimated how many illegal granny flats or second units there are, because we know we see evidence of overcrowding, but is that overcrowding because people, many people aren't at home, or is it the fact that there's a second unit that's unpermitted? I don't have a sense of that. I know in a lot of cities in southeast LA, there's garages that have been converted. I suspect that that's the same here, but it would be nice to know sort of order of magnitude. I mean, we can't know exactly because it's not known, but it would be nice to know that, and just for my own educational interest. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Bow.
Yes, I'd like to thank staff as well for continuing the matter over. I don't think this is, it's coming to us too quickly, too soon, too important an issue. And I think the city in the eighties made some errant decisions in terms of planning, putting apartment buildings in the middle of neighborhoods that destroyed irrevocably the characters of that neighborhood, and I don't see why this is any different, frankly. And I'm very concerned about that. And we have the lowest amount of open space per resident in the city, in the state of California, beyond the density. So, what we're going to do is make a bad matter worse, in my mind. So, I'd like to see also if this should come before us. I'd like to see that park deficient map, and I'd also like to see a discussion of the option to opt out. If there is indeed, would be an option for neighborhoods to opt out, I'd like to see that discussion. And further, I understand that there's possible exemption that the city could apply for, and I think, in the case of Santa Ana, I think that makes eminent sense. I mean, we are bearing the brunt of much of the issues in Orange County, and I don't think that should be borne on the backs of neighbors that invested in single-family dwellings. They don't want this. I mean, I know with my experience with short-term housing, we had an example on my Berry Street, and we came before the council and passed a ban on that. And I know that destroyed, and Anaheim experimented with that, and destroyed, absolutely destroyed the characters of neighborhoods irrevocably, forever. And I don't see that this is going to, that this is going to be any different. So, I'm going to voice my opinion sort of beforehand, being strongly opposed to this.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question of staff, and that is, Commissioner Bauer echoed something that we heard from the speakers this evening regarding opting out. And from what I understood from the meeting that we had at our subcommittee, opting out was not going to be an option. And the reason why I'm bringing that up right now is because that's something in the state mandates, and I'd like for everybody to be on the same page as to understanding whether that is or is not an option that could be written into a local ordinance.
We did have a, there was a proposal that, from the, the community meeting, that the city investigate the option of petitioning the state for an exemption to this ordinance. In the ordinance itself, there is not an opt-out provision, and because of the state's mandates, which say that if you're, and certain provisions of it apply, particularly the parking standards apply universally.
Just for clarity, because there's a lot there. So, simply stated, the state mandates that there are no opt-outs in the city.
At this time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner McLaughlin?
I just, you know, again, to echo what Phil just said, I mean, we haven't had much time on this. We had basically four or five days that we've seen this. And I just want to make sure that, you know, there's so many different topics that we've had tonight, you know, where it has to do with parking, where it has to do with park deficiency. I mean, I really would like to make sure that staff takes into consideration, and we're even talking with another item on the docket tonight, which is talking about how, you know, with accessory units, they're exempt from having to go underground wiring and things like that. There's a lot of different implications. There's the services, the water, the water, the gas, the sewage, and everything else, all these things. And when we start to pile them on top of each other, as we add these units, we're compounding a problem that exists, that exists even today. I mean, our infrastructure underground is challenged, if not, you know, bad from the consideration of what we see around us in other cities. And so, we need to look at all aspects of what this particular program, the accessory unit, has as an impact on our city, on our people that live in our city.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo my colleague's comments. Number one, thank, thank everybody who came out and spent their evening with us, too, to bring up the issue and bring their, bring dialogue and their opinions to the table. It helps us tremendously when we are making our decisions. I appreciate that staff is slowing it down and going back to the table and seeing what our options are. So, I think hopefully, next time we see this on the table, I think we'll have much clearer direction on what our options are, and what we, what we can do on this item. With that, do I have a motion?
To continue?
To continue.
It's moved.
I have a, okay, I'll take Commissioner McLaughlin as the motion, and a second from Commissioner Aldred. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will continue this indefinitely. Thank you. I apologize. I missed something very, very important at the beginning of the meeting. We, at every meeting, we have a communication disclosure item under our business calendar, which I neglected. So, I'd like to go back to that item and bring Commissioner Communication Disclosure to the table. So, at this time, if I have any commissioners that would like to have a disclosure, please let me know. Saying that?
No, I-
Commissioner Bauer?
I have a disclosure on the heritage matter. I spoke with Pamela Sopetto on that matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Bauer. Have any other communication disclosures? Commissioner Aldred?
Thank you. I received a text from Anna Suwa, and a text from Ryan Coleman, but they don't have a reception, just the talk, and just conversation.
Thank you.
And I need to amend. I also received the same text. I didn't disclose that, so.
Okay. So, so yours is, you spoke to Ms. Sopetto and received text?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that was going to cover communication disclosures. We will now, I, is there any reason for us to move number four up, or can we still leave that at the end?
You can, you can leave it where it is if you like.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
That's fine.
Then we will be opening at the public hearing for what is on the agenda as item number two, which is the First Amendment to Development Agreement number 2015-03.
Good evening, Madam Chair, planning commissioners. I'm going to go old school tonight and just do a verbal presentation for you. So, this item before you is a request by a developer of a heritage village project, who's proposing to amend their development agreement to allow the payment of their affordable housing and in lieu fees in phases as opposed to all-in-one lump sum. What I'd like to do right now is give a little bit of background on the project itself, then on the housing opportunity ordinance, and then kind of wrap it up for you. So, first of all, for the project, the project itself, you knew it as the heritage when it came before you about a year ago. Twelve hundred and twenty-one units, about twenty thousand square feet of commercial, and then a fifty-six thousand square foot office building, approved to be allowed to be built in three phases. Several entitlements were before you and the council. One of those was a development agreement. That's before you tonight. As part of the project, it required to pay an affordable housing fee, or do some kind of contribution, I should say, to affordable housing. They elected to pay a fee, and the fee is going to be approximately nine point seven million dollars for those twelve hundred and twenty-one units. The project itself is currently on plan check with phase one. That's three hundred and thirty-five units, and they're hoping to pull permits by the end of the year. By the same time end of the year, they're hoping to put in a second phase of construction into plan check. So, by the end of this year, you'll be looking at about seven hundred and fifty of the units in the plan check, and a payment of, if it's phased, about two point seven million dollars would be the first phase. So, that's the project, a little bit of background on the project. The housing opportunity ordinance was approved about five years ago, kind of a new ordinance, kind of a significant ordinance for us, will require affordable housing contributions for projects. And there's who requires affordable housing contributions can be made in one of three ways: either providing units onsite, offsite, or payment of fees. And that's what the applicant goes on this project here. Now, the existing code says that, I'll read it pretty much verbatim here, that the fees required to be paid before issuance of the first building permit for any portion of the residential project. So, our interpretation of that is, before you pull the permit for the first unit, all the contributions have to be made, which again is about nine point seven million dollars for this project. Now, about four months ago, this body received a request by the applicant to change the housing opportunity ordinance. And what that was looking to do, that would have been a citywide change, which, and they're asking for something similar with tonight, which is the phase and the fees. So, you had that before you, quite a bit of testimony, and you voted, had a tie vote on it. It went to city council, but due for various reasons, the item was never scheduled for a council public hearing. The applicant thought about it, made some considerations, and elected to withdraw that application. So, that change to the zoning code is no longer applicable. In its place is the item before you tonight, which is the change to development agreement only, which will apply to this project itself, and not any other projects in the city, just this project. Now, the major difference between the action, again, that's before you tonight and one or two months ago, is that it's only applicable to the single project. So, this heritage village project will only be before you, asking to change the in lieu, the fees, in lieu fees to be paid in phases. Staff are supportive of the request for one simple reason, is that it's just consistent with our customary and business practices of the planning and building agency. When somebody comes in to pull a permit, it's a pay-as-you-go, where somebody writes down the scope of work on the building permit application, and that's what they pay their fees on. And those fees are everything from park impact fees, to building permit fees, to any other type of housing fees, to public works fees. Everything's based upon that pay-as-you-go. So, in this case, what they have in their application is three hundred and thirty-five units, about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, which equates to about two point seven million dollar fee. Now, the remaining fees for the project will still be paid. They're still required to pay nine point six million dollars as part of the project. All they're asking for is to allow it to be paid in fees, which is customary with our business practices. And that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions, staff? Commissioner Bessera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any other actions regarding this project before us this evening, other than the fees?
No, just the amendment to the development agreement, to be more specific.
So, we're not adding units, we're not subtracting units?
Nope.
Square footage staying the same?
It's all staying the same.
Okay. And you touched on how any other development would pay their development impact fees. Are there any other impact fees other than the in lieu fees for housing that you would require an applicant to pay upfront when they pull their first building permit? Parks, any?
No, those are all based on number of units, or based on square footage of their application. So, this is the only one.
Okay. And then, as far as with the phasing of the in lieu fees, are we going to see any more, any less, or the same, as far as they agree upon total in lieu fees that the applicant agreed to pay?
You're going to see what they agree to pay. The numbers may change a little bit, because as each phase comes in, we've got to just verify the square footage. There may be off a few feet in square footage. The fee's based, it's nine thirty-five per square foot. So, staff has to review the habitable square foot to verify what they submitted in. So, there may be a shift of a few dollars here and there, but nothing significant.
I've never known a developer to come in with less on their square foot. So, maybe you may see a slight, very unnoticed bump.
Yeah, and we'll have to verify that as, yeah, as each phase is submitted in.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Aldred?
Just a couple of questions, Vince. Would the fees, would the project be paid, let's say, we're assuming that we're going through a phased approach, and if, say, after the initial building permit is pulled, the applicant files BK, would we see the remainder, whatever amount is due, the two-thirds that's left?
Only if a new developer comes in and builds a project.
Okay. When do you expect, this is purely a guess on your part, but when do you expect, in terms of timing, that the fees would come in?
Okay.
If we were to go through with a phase?
Sure. So, the first phase was submitted in for plan check. Where's Drew? Probably in June. So, it's about a six-month plan check time? Sound about right? So, submitted in June, pull permits in December, two point seven million dollars. The second phase is going to come in right about the same time, December. So, say, next June, the second phase, and you're looking at approximately three point two million dollars. The third phase, undetermined. They knew upfront that we're going to do the first two phases right away. The third phase, not sure. We put language in the development agreement that they had five years to pull that third phase. Otherwise, the DA would open up, we could add new terms to it. There's also an extension, and they have one-year extension on there, but then the next five years, that third phase would have to come in and be, be pulled, permits be pulled.
Are you, are you aware of any other cities in California, not just Southern California, that, that provides for this sort of payments at the beginning, as it goes to a phase, or is it kind of all of?
Actually, I'm not. No, that's all right. I'm not aware.
All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Commissioner Bauer?
I had a question, Vince. In terms of, this project was in the pipeline.
This is a pipeline project. Nine thirty-five a square foot is the pipeline fee. That's correct.
What, I'm sorry?
Nine dollars and thirty-five cents is the pipeline fee for the project. For any new project, submitted after twenty thirteen, it's fifteen dollars a square foot.
And we're using sort of code for the public. What do we, what do we mean by the pipeline?
Pipeline project is any project that was submitted in before a certain date. There's something grandfathered into the old, old ordinance, and that would be, let's see, I have it right here. Application is deemed complete prior to November 2011, it'd be a pipeline project.
Now, there's been some changes to the housing opportunity ordinance.
There was a couple of revisions last year, yes.
Is it, am I correct with the understanding that future projects, to the extent there are over twenty units to be developed, those developers would have to build in kind?
They have three options. They have three options, provide units, offsite units, onsite units in the project, offsite, or they can still pay a fee.
They can?
Yes.
For the 20 units and more?
Yes, 20 units and more, options are satisfied, let's see, 20 units or more, $15 a square foot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify, I understood that correctly. So, you're saying that if a developer comes in today and builds 21 or more units, they still have the option of an in lieu fee?
They do.
My, my reading of the code says that they have an in lieu fee option if they're building between five and 20 units.
This is the newer one I have here that we approved, June, July?
We have approved in lieu fees for five to 20, yes.
We have them.
Yeah.
Well, no, no, I, I just, I looked at the code online this afternoon, so unless what we're showing the public is incorrect.
Well, now, somebody?
The housing opportunity ordinance online this afternoon shows, it's called Section 41-1904 subsection C, subsection one.
Okay. The online code is not up to date.
It's not up to date.
Right.
So we're saying then today that anybody can come in over that 20-unit threshold and opt for the in lieu fee.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Breser?
Just one quick question, I'd like to, Phil asked earlier, Phil asked earlier about the amount of money that was associated with this, you know, in lieu fee, would it change? And the one thing that came up in the discussion previous was the $9.45, which is the pipeline fee, that could change within the five-year period that they have talked?
No, they're, they're pipelined in, that's their fee.
So the pipeline is for five years?
Yes, that's correct.
That's, I just wanted to.
But if, but if they didn't have a third phase and the DA expires, then they could be submitted to the new ordinance.
To a new pipeline?
Right, to a new fee, whatever the current fee is in year six or seven, whenever it expires.
That, do we have any, Commissioner Alderman?
One last comment.
Yes, sir.
I was on the commission back in November 2011 when we passed the ordinance, the housing opportunity ordinance, and I'm wondering, do you, do you remember, because I don't, how much sort of community outreach was done, were trade associations, developer, my recollection is all those people were notified.
Yes, there was a lot of outreach back then, there was a lot of outreach last year, and we came back to amend it again.
Okay, thank you.
Extensive outreach, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we would, we're going to open up the public hearing. Again, we have many speaker cards on this item, so I would just like to reinforce that the three-minute rule, and if you could all adhere to that, I would appreciate it, we would all appreciate it. I'd like to bring the applicant to the podium to speak on this item.
Good evening, Chairman Verino and members of the commission, thank you very much for this opportunity to address you tonight. I'm Pamela Sipetto, representing Alliance Residential this evening. There are some key points that I'd like to make to you. One is that we withdrew our application for an amendment to the HOO, because after listening to the commissioners during the public hearing and the public testimony, we could see instances where it did not make sense to attempt to amend that ordinance just for the specific conditions of our project. That is why we then filed for a development agreement amendment to only address the specific conditions of our project. The, we believe that our request is fair and reasonable for three key reasons. One is that these impact fees can only be used for the portion of the project that has pulled a building permit. So if the units that created the impact are not built, then the city is liable for returning the fees that have been paid for the unbuilt portion. And I will have our council, Bill Devine, talk to you about that after I speak. We believe that this project is unique and does not set a precedence for other projects that you might review in the future because of its large scale. Because of its scale, it must be built in three phases, and it's being financed in three stages. The, this creates a hardship for the first phase, that's funded by one financing institution, to pay the fees for the remainder of the project. The payment of fees, additionally, the payment of fees in three stages will not negatively impact the funding of the affordable housing project that we have supported all along in our application, which is for the First Street project. We have discussed with city staff how that can occur in the interim, and in fact, by paying in the phased increment that we're building, the payment of the fees per phase will actually get to the city faster. And I will have Mr. Colquitt of the, of Alliance Residential talk to you about that. We hope the planning commission can support our request, not only because it is fair and reasonable, but also because it is not hindering the development of affordable housing in the city. So with that, I will turn this over to Mr. Devine.
Thank you. My name is William Devine, with Alan Mattkins, here on behalf of the developer. Just a couple, a couple of points to make, just to make sure that there's clarity before a decision is made. As, as was already indicated, the proposal here is not going to change the amount of the affordable housing fee that will be paid. The affordable housing fee will be based on the terms of the development agreement, which is based, I think it was $9.35 per square, per habitable square foot, and that will not change. The actual determination of habitable square footage really takes place during the building permit process, because that's when the, the details of the structure actually refine. So, based on the refinement of the, that as part of the building permit process, we actually identify the exact habitable square footage, which then determines that fee. So, right now, we've got a project that's going to be built in three phases, makes sense to pay it in three phases. The ordinance itself was not as clear as it could have been when it was originally looked at by the developer, the impression based on experience in other cities and based on the language was that it would be paid in phases, based on the three phases of the project. When we approached the city to talk about paying that first phase, that's when we learned that the city interpreted it differently. So based on that discussion, we kind of went through a process of looking at a two, a couple of different options. One was to amend the opportunity ordinance itself, the other was to go just a very specific, targeted, project-specific approach, which is where we are today. The, the other important factor to know is that, again, the fee is based on habitable square footage. To the extent that a fee is paid upfront, and ultimately, a second or a third phase is not built, those fees have to be refunded to the developer. So, if the city were to take those funds and put them somewhere else, those funds would have to be returned, whether it's from the general fund or wherever. So, even though the fees might be paid upfront, they're still not actually really available to be spent until that third phase is done. The, so I think, and the other situation, just to be aware of, is that by paying in phases, as Pam mentioned, the likelihood is that you're going to get the first phase and the second phase paid much sooner than you otherwise would, because the likelihood is that without being able to pay in phases, there would be a delay period in which we would wait until that third phase was ready to go. So that would mean probably a delayed in payment, more of a delay than under the scenario we're proposing. So, that's, those are all my comments for tonight, if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Drew Colquitt, I'm with Alliance Residential, I'm the partner in charge of building the Heritage Village project, and I wasn't here last time this was discussed, because I didn't actually know that we had a controversy. So, I've gotten up to speed, but I thought I would say a few things if I could. Number one, I'm not, we're not usually involved in controversies. Our style is, we're a white hat developer, we win architectural awards, we win city planning awards, we like to work with the planning departments to build the best possible solutions in every city we build in. Right now, we're the largest department developer in the country, we have the capacity to do this, of course, but this is an unusually big project. The reason it's called Heritage Village, it's a village, it's 1,200 units, typical apartment community is between 50 and 150 units, this is 1,200 units. So, since day one, it's been divided into three buildings, three mixed-use multifamily buildings, plus a commercial building that was being renovated, that's never changed. What, I wanted to say a few things. We are working as fast as possible, no one has more resources in this business than us. Our biggest competitor locally is the Irvine Company, and I have promised the planning department that I would, we were going to build a much nicer building than they would, and we're excited to go up against them here in Arns County. But this, this village is, it's very, very large, at 1,200 units. And I wanted to clarify something, I think that Vince said earlier. Number one, we are already in for building permit on the first phase and the second phase, we are moving very, very quickly. It looks to me, based on talking to my architect before the meeting, that our third phase will be in for permitting on, in the month of December, the month of January at the latest. So we have not stalled. The way we've gone about our approach is to try to get going as quickly as possible. If we hired an architectural firm to design 1,200 units at once, and to go through the process in the city for 1,200 units at once, that would be a far more timely process, it would take a lot longer. Doing it in this manner, it's allowed us to apply for our first, in August, we applied for the first permit, and in September, we were in already for the second permit. Our intent is to pay the full fee to you as fast as possible. No one loses more than I do and my team does if we let construction costs continue to roll. We want to get all of our fees paid to you as soon as possible on the 1,200-unit village that is Juanita Village, I mean, I'm sorry, that is not Juanita Village, that is Heritage Village. I was just talking to my assistant, Juanita, a few minutes ago, she would love that I named the project after her. My, my point is that there's a little over 25 million in total fees coming in as part of this project. Every other fee, every other impact fee is paid as the building permits are given to us. I have been developing my whole career, up and down the West Coast, Portland, Oregon, Seattle, San Diego, Santa Monica, City of LA, and I'm doing, what we're asking to do is what we've done in every other one of those cities, pay our permits, pay for all the impact fees that are required of us without trying to get a special deal, pay for them when we pick up our permits and we start construction. We have never seen a front-end loaded fee, especially a $9.5 million front-end loaded fee, to be put on the back of one development. It is making that development, it's causing financial problems for that phase, which doesn't help anybody if we can't go forward with any phases. So, I would like you to think about, if we had come forward with one set of documents, we had to be fully designed and fully permitted to pay the fee, we would be paying the fee in our, excuse me, probably a year later, then we're going to be able to pay the first third. And as you can see by our actions, we have one of the largest multifamily architectural firms in the Western United States, working full speed with three teams to get in as quickly as possible. And a lot of the timing between today and when these fees are paid is going to be up to city staff, because I think we're bearing city staff right now and plans to review. But, I mean, Vince, when you say we're in for the first phase, we're in for the second phase, and we have been in to see you and your team, showing you the, where we are so far on the third phase. So, we're not stalling, we're moving as quickly as possible, time kills, kills deals. So, I look you guys in the eye and I say, we want to pay the fee, we're not trying to get a deal, I want to pay it as fast as possible. The way that I'm doing this, phasing this 1,200-unit village, basically dividing it close to thirds, it's not a change to the design, it's not a change to the way we heard.
Please wrap up your comments.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Right, my three minutes?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm known for that, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, those are the, I think that is the only representation on behalf of the developer? Okay, we're going to go ahead then, and, yes.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Bauer?
Before we do that, if I may ask a question of Stan?
Absolutely.
Vince?
Yes, sir.
There's been assertions here that the, the payment, and I need to understand this, and, and maybe we all do, there's been assertions that the fee would be paid later if it was all paid, all required at once, rather than a phased approach. And I'm not certain I understand that. I mean, why isn't a fee due and payable upfront, once you get the original permit for the, as, as we're doing now?
Sure. What I got in that conversation that Drew gave is that he would not pull the permit now, he'd pull it next year, later next year, a year later.
So no permits have been pulled?
None of them, no.
So?
No building permits, they have a grading permit, they do some rough grading, which is okay, but no building permits.
So the assertion is that no permit will be pulled, and there'll be a delay if the fee is required all upfront?
That's, that's correct, huh? That's what I heard as well.
Okay, thank you, we're going to go ahead then, and start with the first speaker card I have, and that is for Gustavo De Haro.
Good evening. My name is Gustavo De Haro, and I've taken the liberty of passing around a letter on behalf of our company, Amcal Multi-Housing. We are the company that is working on the affordable housing development that was mentioned earlier this evening, that has been sort of a duo project linked to the Heritage Village. For the sake of transparency and for the benefit of the public, I'd like to read that letter to you tonight. So, addressed to the chairwoman, Lynette Verino, and members of the planning commission. As you know, Amcal Multi-Housing has been working in partnership with the city of Santa Ana for approximately the past two years to develop First Street Apartments, which is a 69-unit, high-quality affordable housing for working families located off of 1440 East First Street. As part of the city-approved entitlements, which we have, we've worked closely with, closely with members of the community and the planning commission to incorporate design feedback and thoughtful preferences, including four-bedroom units for large families in the city of Santa Ana. As you know, the proposed development is dependent on receipt of approximately $8.7 million of in lieu fees from the Heritage Village development. This proposed amendment to the Heritage Village Development Agreement, allowing the payment of in lieu fees over time, will result in significant delay in the commencement of construction of First Street Apartments housing project. While we fully understand and appreciate the Heritage Village developers' desire to pay the in lieu fees over time, we believe it is critical that, that any action of the planning commission not jeopardize the viability of, of the East First Street's affordable housing development. As such, we request that any agreement to allow the deferral of the payment of in lieu fees be conditioned upon a commitment from the city to use existing city housing funds to bridge the gap in the in lieu fees payable in the future by the Heritage Village development. A commitment by the city to bridge the in lieu fees would allow for First Street Affordable Projects, First Street Affordable Project to proceed as currently scheduled and not suffer any delays. The need for affordable housing in the city of Santa Ana remains at a crisis level, and we believe that the commission should not take any action which would delay the production of 69 units of quality affordable housing produced by the First Street Apartments project. I'd just like to take the remaining time to just mention that I heard earlier this evening, many of the residents speak about what kind of affordable housing they would like, they recognize it's a need. First Street Apartments is not only affordable for the lowest-income families, but also located along a commercial corridor, it includes parks, it includes a community garden. So I think this is the kind of affordable housing that we've been told from our perspective, from the community's perspective, that they're looking for, and we look to you for your support. support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next would be Lynette Guzman.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Lynette Guzman, and I'm representing the Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities. We are committed to addressing health inequities and improving opportunities for a healthy, thriving Santa Ana. The Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities consist of several community-based organizations, nonprofits, youth, and adult residents. I've heard many stories, and you will continue to hear many stories tonight, of families living in overcrowded homes or apartments, families paying over half their paycheck to live in a city that has been home to them for, and their families for generations. We are not providing enough restricted affordable housing to address our large housing needs and low-income worker, for low-income workers. Many have to make tough decisions between paying for their housing or paying for other essential life necessities such as food, transportation, or healthcare. We are against amending the development agreement between the city and the Heritage Village developers. Amending their development agreement undermines the Housing Opportunity Ordinance. This ordinance was meant to address the affordable housing crisis in Santa Ana. The proposed amendment sets a bad example and could result in noncompliance with the Housing Opportunity Ordinance from future developers. Santa Ana now has the best opportunity to set an example for addressing affordable housing to the rest of our county and state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the public. My name is Anna Urzua. I'm a resident of Santa Ana, and I'm here to address all of you tonight and the public as well. Again, my name is Anna Urzua, and I'd like to provide a little bit of context to this conversation. I'm reminded of these past couple of months where the issue of homelessness was brought to the forefront during this election season, where many, where many candidates stepped forward to talk about a housing-first approach in Santa Ana to be able to help, to alleviate this tremendous issue before us. I think tonight, with this decision, is our, we have the chance and the opportunity to make recommendations towards housing opportunities that meet the needs of Santa Ana. You've also been hearing the concern about congestion and overcrowding in our city, and I think that the Housing Opportunities Ordinance also helps to alleviate congestion, not to increase density, but for the opportunity of a good quality of life for people that are already here. I would like to, to state that it's important to separate a couple of things with the conversation tonight about this development, this amendment with the development agreement. One is that I also support the creation of affordable housing soon, and I also, and I support a firm commitment letter to be produced for the project on East First Street, for the creation of much-needed affordable housing now. However, I do not believe that we should move forward with a development agreement for, with an amendment to the development agreement for the Heritage Project, for a couple of reasons. Number one is, I believe that this project is already benefiting from being grandfathered into a clause that allows it to pay $9.35 and not the $15 that all development projects should be paying. Secondly, with a construction this big, it is so important that mixed use also allows for mixed incomes, and that we don't have additional segregation in our city by being, by producing housing that is only for higher income in, in our city. Also, to be reminded that this is an 18-acre project that is going to be producing 1,221 units of luxury housing, and I think some of the concerns about density and, and infrastructure also play out here. But most importantly, I think that it was really helpful to hear the experience of this developer and know that there should be no concern with, with their ability to be, to pay back, or to pay or to complete this project. And so, I think it eases the concern that our city need to pay back any funds for this developer, and also, the success that this developer has had should not have us be concerned about them not being able to pay those in-lu fees upfront. So, I believe that rather than delay the ability to create additional affordable housing, that we can be, that we can be successful by expecting the development agreement to stay the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman, planning commission members. A lot of the points have been mentioned already, I think. What I would want to focus on is, this really is the doing of the developer. He brought in 1,200 units, wanting to maximize the ability for him to get a lower in-lu fee, and that's the reason why they entitled these projects, knowing that they, they may not be able to do them all at the one, one time. They took that gamble because they wanted a lower, a lower in-lu fee versus the $15 in-lu fee today. So, if we are going to open up the development agreement, I think that there is an opportunity for people to think about how it can be done so that it can benefit the creation of affordable housing, and also, how it's going to benefit the city. Should the in-lu fee be the $9, or should it be the $15, if you're going to go that route? That's one, one way of thinking about it. I think our perspective is that the development agreement should continue the way it is. The commitments were made early on, they even identified a partner where they were going to identify a different side to meet that, that affordable housing commitment. They also have the option to do it on-site. They have plenty of land on-site to do it. Let's also consider that 19, 19 acres have been taken off the market, where development can no longer happen, whether it's affordable or market rate. They're controlling their own, their own destiny in that, in that area. So, I think from our perspective, it's, it's an opportunity to really make sure that we are addressing the true issues, they're addressing the market rate issues, which are very much needed in our community, but they're not addressing the affordable issues, and they've made a decision to put that, own this elsewhere on the city, and now we're asking the city to backfill that commitment. That doesn't seem fair. That doesn't seem fair at this point. It also doesn't seem fair that if the city's being asked to put money out, that they're not going to get an amount greater than that. If you're going to a bank, you're getting a loan, you're going to pay more than what you got. So, those are some of the issues we want you to consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gil Salmon.
Good evening. My name is Gil, and I am very lucky to consider myself a homeowner here in Santa Ana. I own a historic home in Ward II. I'm also a environment and transportation commissioner for the city of Santa Ana for Ward II, and there's a few things that concern me about making this amendment. One is that, you know, there was an ordinance passed. A lot of people were engaged in that process to create that ordinance. And just like spot planning and, you know, zone variances tend to be bad planning, I think making spot amendments is also a bad, bad planning practice. And I don't put that on the staff, you know, I meet with Holly, I, I, you know, when Melanie comes to our meetings, it's great. You know, I, I'm really appreciative of the staff here in the city, but I think that in this instance, you guys have an opportunity to really say, "This is the ordinance that we created as a city, and we're not going to amend that specifically just for one project on a spot-by-spot basis." And, you know, to further speak to that, the, the ordinance itself describes that the primary means of complying with the inclusionary requirements is the, the provision of on-site inclusionary units. You know, this is an opportunity for us to create in phases, below-market units alongside market units. The ordinance already provides for building of those units in phase alongside those market units, and so, why do we need to be, create an amendment just to be providing phases? If the developer's really concerned about the phasing, let's have the units be built on-site, on-site in phases. You know, Measure JJJ just passed in LA. A friend of mine is part of an LA renters agreement, or organization, and he asked me, he said, "You know, how's the Housing Opportunity Ordinance going on in Santa Ana?" And they, and I let them know, "Look, like, this developer wants to come in and change the rules," and they were really concerned about the fact that that would happen in LA. And so, all of you have an opportunity to really say that in Santa Ana, when we pass ordinances, we enforce them, and when it's for the better of the community, we, we follow up on that. And to take a leadership role and to show LA who's put in an even more, you know, sort of intense process, to show LA that, you know, when we have these ordinances, we're really serious about building affordable housing, and building it primarily on-site, and if, if the cost is prohibitive, to pay an in-lu fee. And so, I appreciate your time tonight, and I really hope you take up this opportunity to, to do the right thing.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Ryan Smollett.
Hi again, Ryan Smollett. I'm a resident of Santa Ana, and I work for your downtown business district. And I deeply respect all that housing advocates speaking before you today, they're my friends, and I've also learned a lot from them, but I also have a different perspective. I sit on the city's Economic Development Council with the, with the Chamber of Commerce, and we look very closely at how can we get more development happening in this city? It's a huge problem. We're underdeveloped, other cities have cranes in the sky, they're building, and we are not. At the recent GROW conference, Hassan suggested there are about 2,500 units in the pipeline right now. I'm assuming in 12, the 1,200 here is 50% of all the housing being built in the city right now. That's substantial, and for downtown to survive, we need more residents in the downtown, and we also need more people living in Santa Ana. So, we think this is a great project in that it brings in new residents, it's bringing in $10 million towards the construction of affordable housing, which is much needed, and it makes sense for the scale of this project and the nature of it, that it's being built in phases, for, for the fee to come in, in phases. I think probably if the city is liable in collecting the fee, until all the housing gets built, I don't, I can't imagine that the city would expenditure that, that money before that liability is gone from all of the housing being constructed anyway. So, this has been a story, or, or an item that I've followed in, in the news and tried to learn and educate myself on, but in talking with Hassan Agani and the planning staff, I really believe that they really understand the, both the business needs of this community and the affordable housing and resident needs very, very intimately, and they even understand what kind of affordable housing needs to be built and what percentages. And so, if this is the best deal that they can negotiate and that they're bringing before us, I think it's probably the best deal that we can get, and it's something that we really need. So, I appreciate everyone's opinion on this, but just wanted to let you know what we think. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Yvonne Flores.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm a real estate agent. I have pulled permits in Los Angeles, Wilmington, Compton, Anaheim, probably a couple more cities as well. I've never been afforded the opportunity to pay my permit fees in stages, never. We should be really looking out for the residents of Santa Ana and putting that affordable housing money as a priority. We need affordable housing more than we need developers, and these developers have already gotten a really great deal. They're only paying, you know, a small fraction of what developers would be paying today. In addition, they've been planning this for a long time. When I'm in the same position, when something doesn't go my way, I go to the city council and I ask for a change. It doesn't better the, the community, it betters my business. So, I'm asking you to look at the affordable housing as an important thing to our city because we have little boys and girls teaming up in homes with multiple families, and they need affordable housing, and 69 units is not enough. It's not. It's really sad that it's only going to bring 69 units. So, please, 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 think about the families that we have here, ask for all of these fees to be paid upfront, do not make a change to that, because they went into this with an idea, we all did as a city, went into this as an idea, and they knew. They're just having cash flow issues. Let them figure it out on their own. They want this project, they're invested in this project, they'll build the project, but don't put it on the backs of affordable housing or on the backs of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Arsalie Robles, y soy residente de aquí de la ciudad de Santana, y vengo a pedirles a todos ustedes que por favor no apoyen estos cambios que quieren hacer a la ordenanza, porque se van a construir 60 unidades, pero son 60 unidades que van a ser el cambio en 60 familias, que muchos de los niños no van a estar en riesgo probablemente de sufrir abuso sexual, porque ocurre mayormente cuando las viviendas están densamente pobladas. Todos hacemos un trabajo o hacemos un contrato y nos decimos, "Oh, déjame, ¿por qué no lo cambiamos en fases? A todos nos pagan un sueldo completo, no, no lo hacen en fases. Entonces, ¿por qué la comunidad tiene que salir perdiendo? Nosotros como ciudad tenemos que crear un precedente realmente, de que no solo trabajamos para un grupo de personas, trabajamos para una comunidad. Ahorita estos desarrolladores quieren cambiar, mañana vienen otros desarrolladores y van a cambiar otra cosa, entonces, ¿para qué están nuestros representantes del gobierno? Para que vengan a hacer lo que quieran? Entonces, ¿para qué estamos? ¿Para qué están ustedes aquí? ¿Para qué estamos nosotros aquí? Si quien habla es el dinero, ¿para qué estamos perdiendo el tiempo? ¿Para qué están perdiendo el tiempo con ustedes, con su familia? Si van a hacer cosas que unas personas quieren su beneficio. Yo realmente les pido, yo tuve, tengo una necesidad de vivienda, tengo un hijo con una condición mental, y por no cumplir el contrato, no me dieron prórroga, no me dijeron, "Oh, te puedes quedar." Dijeron, "No cumpliste el contrato, te vas." ¿Por qué tenemos que hacer concesiones con otras personas? Yo solamente les pido realmente, pongan su mano en el corazón, necesitamos vivienda ahora, no necesitamos vivienda de aquí a cinco años, de aquí a diez años, o de aquí a 15 años. Son 60 familias que se van a beneficiar con un desarrollo de bajo costo en estos momentos. Por favor, les pido, tomen conciencia, y por favor, no dejen que vengan y hagan de la ciudad de Santana lo que ellos quieran, porque para eso yo confío que ustedes representan a la comunidad, y los concejales de la ciudad representan a la comunidad, y no están sirviendo solamente a un sector que solamente tiene dinero. Ellos van a recuperar su dinero. Ahorita yo me puse a hacer matemáticas y dije, "Wow, 10 millones para ellos no es nada, conforme todo el dinero que van a sacar con este proyecto de, de vivienda." Por favor, les pido realmente que no hagan ningún cambio.
Good evening. My name is Arsalie Robles, I'm Santana, and I ask you to not, to say no to these changes. There are 60 units that can be built to make families' lives better, so children won't have to suffer possible sexual abuse, because that's what happens when they live in overcrowding, overcrowded conditions. When I make a contract, when I make an agreement, I don't, I can't just go back and change it. When we get a salary, we get a complete salary, we, we don't get our salary in, in phases. This is going to have a precedent, and we need to work, the people need to work, you need to work for the community, not for the people who have the money. We need to, does money talk in here, or does, we, you're here to, to serve the community? I ask you to do this. I, I am in need of hous, of housing myself. I have a son with mental health issues, and I didn't fulfill some part of my contract, and I didn't have to, I could not negotiate, I was out. So, why make concessions with, with people who have money? We need housing now, not in five years, 10 years, or 50 years. There are 60 families that will benefit now, and this is what the Santa Ana community needs. You work for the community, the city works for, for the community. I, I did the math, and $10 million for these people is not a lot of money, it's nothing to them because of all the money they're gonna, they're going to make. So, support this now and say no to these changes.
Thank you. Gracias. Our next speaker is Hugo Munoz.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Hugo Munoz, and I was born and
My name is Hugo Munoz, and I was born and raised in Santana. Let me back up a minute here. I also represent Sacred, and I've been a longtime resident, born and raised, got through public school here in Santa Ana, went on to UCLA, got a polyside degree, political science, graduated in 2009, and thought I'd be able to come home and get a job, a well-paying job, and thought I'd be able to afford an apartment at least here in Santa Ana. Unfortunately, we know that Santa Ana is going through a bit of a housing crisis. I don't need to really dwell on that. I think the residents have also done a pretty good job of explaining the kind of density we have here in the city. In light of kind of my story and the story of so many residents that we've heard tonight, in light of the density that we're experiencing here in Santa Ana, we ask that you, that we all together really provide the kind of leadership that we need to really address the density in our city. And that means keeping the agreement as it stands. I think that they can take care of their needs on their end, but I think that we also need to look out for our city. As someone that's also done community organizing, and I've worked with the homeless population, I mean, they're in our backyard. Homelessness is a very real issue, and many of our folks here have also made a good case for why we need to really look at this issue and begin to provide housing for residents. I mean, let's face it, what we're going to have is an influx of folks. Now, earlier we heard a gentleman say, and a lot of these folks are my friends as well, heard him say that we need more folks to come into Santa Ana. What kind of folks are we talking about? Let's be real here. Let's be real. I mean, we're talking about high-income residents, but we know that that's not the bulk of our population. And if we're going to be responsible tonight, then we're going to vote so that this agreement stands. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Juan Carlos.
Buenas noches, miembros de comisión de planeación. Soy residente de Santana, y yo no estoy de acuerdo con cambiar el acuerdo que tienen porque a mí se me ha sido muy difícil aplicar para vivienda accesible. Pienso que aquí en Santana, pues hay mucha gente que tiene la necesidad también como yo, pero cada vez abre más la brecha de vivienda. O sea, necesitamos más viviendas accesibles. Y pienso que pues todos los urbanizadores y desarrolladores de Santana tienen una visión siempre a beneficio para, pues para ellos, porque realmente ha habido muchas prórrogas, muchos beneficios que se le han adjudicado, que se han beneficiado de que no han pagado tanto como ha estado la ordenanza. Entonces pienso que no es justo que tengan que hacer, que la ciudad tenga que pagar verdad todo el dinero para que ellos aplacen, o tengan oportunidad de que ellos paguen aplazos. Y pues para mí, confío en ustedes que van a hacer una buena decisión, y gracias por escucharme.
Gracias.
Good evening, members of this body. I'm a Santa Ana resident, and I don't agree with the changes to the agreement because it's hard for me to apply for affordable housing. There are many people that are in need of affordable housing like us myself, and we need more affordable units. All the developers come and benefit from our city, they benefit themselves when they make these things, and they get lots of benefits to them. They don't pay as the new ordinance says that they should pay, and it's not fair that the city has to pay all that money for them to pay in phases. And I trust that you will make the right decisions.
Thank you. The next speaker, Isabel Lopez.
My name is Isabel Lopez. I'm a U.S. citizen, and I was born here. And I don't know, since I've been sitting here all night, I'll hear about money, money, money. The real reason that we need affordable housing is because there's people out there. I may say about people coming in. I'm talking about the people that live here. There's a lot of veterans out there, there's a lot of people that have mental issues that were born here. I have cancer. I waited eight years just to get affordable housing. I only get $800. My rent's $873. I paid my taxes. I pay, I still have to pay federal taxes. I got audited a couple of years ago. They didn't let me get the portions. Come on, the real reality here that we need affordable, I'm not saying that I have that illness because I want pity, or because I don't want, we're just saying that what is happening here? We have to take care of our own before we go out there and help somebody else. Because we, I was up there, I had a job, I had a nice home, I had cars, I had money, you know, and it got me greedy, it got me mean, it got me, just think of me. Sometimes I think this illness is a blessing because there's a lot more people. I thank God I got that affordable housing, but I still lay there at night thinking that there's still people out there. I don't have very much to live, but I think that I'm failing as a citizen, as we promised, that we have to help our neighbor. All turn on their cheek, I don't have any more cheek, you know, to turn to. You know, it's just confusing. We just have to help our own. Get our heart out there. There's no more heart. Everybody's just cold. Before we used to give jackets out, there's not that anymore. What are we showing our kids? Material stuff, money, money. You know? My grandkids don't come anymore because to them, no, you're affordable housing. What's wrong with being affordable housing? You know? But I don't, there's so much that I have to say. I mean, I'm not very educated, I'm not very smart, but I have a heart, and I know what they could afford and what we can't afford. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's, that's it for the speaker cards. If there's anyone else that would like to speak on this item, now is the time because that was the last speaker card I have on this item. Okay. Saying none, then we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back for any comments or want to entertain a motion. Mr. Vasara?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we originally amended the housing opportunity ordinance a couple of years ago, I was under the impression that when we decide upon the in-lufys, and later the council actually increased the amount of the in-lufys, that the in-lufys would actually be a very undesirable option. And as I've stated publicly on many occasions, I see the way that the ordinance is crafted today, at least what I saw online, was that, again, the in-lufy would not be something that would be readily exercised. So understanding that the in-lufys are an option for all projects, I originally thought there was a cap on them, but apparently not. So to me, this whole thing should be addressed as policy, not as in a development agreement. We had this come before us as a policy question, and now it comes back before us as an amendment to a development agreement. I don't think the planning commission should be weighing in on fees. When it was before us as a policy question, the question was, do we amend Chapter 41 of our zoning code? Today, this is a development agreement that was entered into between the city council and the developer. I don't think it's appropriate that we should be weighing in on a development agreement. With that being said, I do support the phasing in of fees. I think that, as staff had clarified for us earlier, other development impact fees are paid in this same fashion, so I do not see any reason why we would not do that for the affordable housing in-lufy. But that question's not before us tonight. The question is not whether any other project would benefit or not from this. This is one project and one agreement. If my colleagues were to move that we were to work with the developer on this, I'd be inclined because I support the phasing in of fees, but I do not like the idea of doing it on a development agreement by development agreement basis. I think this should be a policy question, and I frankly don't think that our commission should be weighing in on this. I think this is really a decision for the council. I understand that it's before us because the development agreement included entitlements for this project that involve land use, which is the purview of this planning commission. We're not the city council, we do not set fees. So it's just my humble opinion that we should not even be weighing in on this, and I'd be willing to entertain the motion to make no recommendation to the city council. Not a recommendation of no, but just no recommendation altogether. That would be my thought on this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Gardner?
Housing gets created really by developers. In other words, if we're not an attractive city financially to bring in new projects, then no fees will be created. And what the developer is asking is, he's not trying to wiggle out of paying fees, he's trying to pay the fees in which seems reasonable phases to me. And it will create a chunk of money for affordable housing. And so I'm in favor of encouraging development and trying to create more projects in Santa Ana, because people aren't, if it's unattractive to come to Santa Ana, then it's actually be more, less fees will be created. And this is a giant project, and it seems reasonable to split it up. It's not a small job. So I'd be in favor of the fees being split up. But I also agree with Commissioner Vasara that it is kind of a policy question. I think this is something that should come up in general. We have to decide upfront if this is going to happen in the future. So when other developments come along, three phases of 200 units apiece, is that going to be an option as a phase? And also frankly, sometimes I don't agree with in-lufys either. I'd actually rather see real units built. So that would be my preference. But I understand economics, and we also need more housing, so I'm in favor of splitting up the fees.
Any other comments? Like Commissioner?
I'm going to go back to what was said earlier in the very beginning, and it was said that by splitting the fees up, this was not going to impact the other project. And so I'd like to kind of understand that a little bit more because, you know, I think we may be talking about something that could be a timing issue of maybe a couple of months, not a couple of years. And so I guess I got to go back and ask Heritage, how does that, with the phasing process, because what I did hear is this, we have a phasing process that's been proposed, and if you look at the first phase, it's $2.735, $2.7 million, and then right behind it is another $3,200, $3.2 million. So when you look at that in comparison to the total in-lufy of $9,700,000, there's a small gap in there. But I also heard mentioned when you were talking about third phase starting, you know, when does that start and when do those fees come about? And then the next question goes back to, you know, Gustavo to say, you know, when is the AmCal project shovel-ready? When is that project going to be ready to break ground? And, you know, if somebody could explain how that, how big or small that gap is, I'd like to understand.
Thank you. Even though the public hearing is closed, I can answer this question. The, what I was speaking to Commissioner McLaughlin is that we had extensive conversations with the city staff on how to bridge that gap in the interim. We believe that the fees, there's two things that Gustavo or AmCal needs, and, the, one is that they need a letter of guarantee from the city that the project will be, project funds will be available for the, when they go out to ask for their tax credit financing. And that is at an earlier date than when they actually need the money to build. So what we discussed with the city was that we would, that the, more than likely, the $5 million in fees would be paid in time for that letter of guarantee to be given to, for the tax credit financing, and there would then be a gap of $2 million plus that the city could utilize from their affordable housing funds to make, to guarantee that, to guarantee that note. So, and then what we know what will happen is at the time that the actual funds are needed, we know that those fees will be paid by Alliance in time for that, which is out more towards the end of 2017. Would you agree with that?
Sure. I'd like to. Thank you. So generally, that is correct, and just to add to that, it is our intention to break ground and start construction next year, assuming that this works out. What wasn't really clearly outlined this evening was that if there is a phasing, there will be a need for gap financing from the city. And so should any phasing be approved on behalf of AmCal, we would need to confirm that the gap financing on behalf of the city would also be approved in order for us to move forward next year. I'd just like to add that we were planning to apply for tax credits last year due to this need for more clarity with the fees and the phasing. We were not able to do so. Had we done so, we would already be starting construction today. So there already has been an impact. We're trying to mitigate, we're trying to mitigate that further, and that's why we're here today and trying to work with all of our partners.
So let me clarify.
We weren't even approved yet, so that delay was not because of our request.
I mean, so the two numbers, the two numbers that come to mind, and correct me if I'm wrong on the second number, but the first number is you've got about roughly $2 million to $2.5 million that needs to be covered in the short term.
That's what we asked.
Okay. And the project, the AmCal project itself is...
We've requested, we've received a commitment for $8.7 million.
But I mean, you've got, it's a $54 million project?
No, sir, it's $27 million.
$27, okay, my bad. But I mean, I'm just saying that the fees are not covering, the fees are basically covering about a third of the...
They're covering a portion, correct.
Yeah, a third of the total spending. So you still have to go out and get $14 million?
Well, we've already confirmed other funding sources. We layered the financing for these projects. So with the placement of this commitment for in-lufys, the final phase would be tax credit, tax credits to finance the project.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Commissioner McLaughlin?
Just to clarify, last thing, so if this moves forward, we are ready to break ground, start construction next year. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. No, his question was answered. So I don't think there's any need for further discussion. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Vasara?
As I said earlier, you know, for us to be talking at this level of fees, I mean, we're getting really into the weeds on this. When we first saw the entitlements for the Heritage, there were two people that were up here, one's no longer up here, who insisted that we make some sort of recommendation on fees for the AmCal project, which we had never even seen, didn't know anything about, didn't know how big, small, nothing. But we were making the recommendation. Regardless, we are getting beyond our purview. I'm going to read from the AmCal letter that was distributed to us, just to give you an idea of how far in the weeds we're getting here. "We request that any agreement to allow the deferral of the payment of in-lufys be conditioned upon a commitment from the city to use existing city housing funds to bridge the in-lufys payable in the future by the Heritage Village Development." Not concerned about what it's saying, just wondering why we're discussing it. I just... I, I just, again, I appreciate all the back and forth that we've got as far as what's going on here, and I'm just going to be so bold as just to say, I'd like to make a motion that we make no recommendation to the city council regarding the First Amendment to Development Agreement Number 2015-03.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second on that? On Commissioner Becerra's motion? Okay. I will entertain a alternate motion. I'd like to make a comment first off, before anything. I, I agree to some point on Commissioner Becerra's assessment. So to be talking about the actual dollars and, and in its relationship to the other project kind of takes away from the actual issue on the table, the actual item, which is to amend the development agreement. And the amendment is, are we going to allow for phased approach or not? Do, and, and again, that's based on the entitlements that are in the development agreement. So I, I'm, my take is that there was an agreement made. There is some dependencies on this money for another project that I think is very, very important to the, to the community and to the city as a whole. Unfortunately, we're, we're at this crossroads where, you know, one has to pay for the other. This is a big project. I don't think anybody's going to disagree that it's 1,200 units, which is huge. It's a huge project. But at the same time, the developers came into this agreement knowing it's a big project, and you got to break on develop, you got to break on the fees. It's, you're paying less than you would have under normal circumstances. I, I don't, I, I just, I, at this point in time, I just, I can't support us going into phased approach. We get the money, we, you know, that was part of the agreement, to pick up the money before the permits were issued, and the project is dependent on that. And for me, that's the bottom line. Commissioner Alder?
I'm glad that you all have come out here. I'm here to defend the, the Housing Opportunity Ordinance that the city passed in 2011. I was on the commission at that time. The ordinance had a lot of community input. The Building Industry Association of Southern California, Orange County Chapter had input, developers had input, residents had input. And we even changed it from the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance to the Housing Opportunity Ordinance to appease folks who had a concern about using the term, the term inclusionary. So I stand here behind the ordinance that I voted for in 2011. I also want to say that, you know, I've done a little bit of individual research, and I know that the BIA pointed out today that Orange County is second only to the Bay Area in lack of affordable housing. But I think there are cities in the Bay Area that actually provide for upfront loading of the fees. I think Berkeley does that, I think Richmond does that, and I know that Oakland requires two installments. One of those installments is due prior to the issuance of the building permit for any portion of the development project. The second installment is due prior to the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy or a security of occupancy. So I don't think we can, we can just believe that, that there's a sort of one size fits all of these sorts of ordinances. The other thing that I would say is that affordable housing is probably right now the civil rights issue of our time. It is, in this community, I think is particularly important. And I don't know how many of you were here back in 2011, but passing this ordinance was no small feat. There were, some of the, some of the comments I heard tonight about the granny, the granny unit housing were brought to us then, saying that, well, Santa Ana's spending over backwards on affordable housing. It's, it's run down, it's crime-infested. Well, we weren't providing quality of affordable housing, and I think that's what we try to accomplish through the Housing Opportunity Ordinance. And like many of you today, I would like to see the units built, but that isn't what we have right now. And what I'd like to see, at a minimum, is the application of the ordinance that we passed. So that means we can't renegotiate it, or at least I'm not inclined to renegotiate, because deals get renegotiated all the time. But this isn't one that I think should be renegotiated, because folks had their opportunity to provide input, and, and so I stick behind that decision that was made then. You know, since I've been on the commission, or at least within the last, say, year, I can't remember that many affordable housing ordinance that have come forward. CNC Development produced the McShues Depot at Santiago, and now we have this first project. And I, I do understand that it's confusing to deal with a project and dedicating funds for a project that we've not yet seen, and then dealing with issues. But for me, the issue today, and it's one that I'm glad to speak on, I think it is public policy for us to look at the development agreement, is that we have to stick by the agreement. So the, the, the motion could be that we just don't do anything. We give that agreement place, and everything stays the same. So I'll stick by that agreement.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
I'm going to say it in Spanish, and then I'll say it in English. Primeramente, este, agradezco los recientes que están aquí, ¿verdad? Este, yo comprendo que hay necesidad para vivienda. Yo lo estoy pasando también, les puedo decir eso. Este, entiendo que no sería buena idea de cambiar la, la ordenanza que, que está hecha en puesto. Alguien parece que dijo que no sería buena idea cambiarla solamente para un proyecto, ¿verdad? Este, estoy de acuerdo con eso. Este, y leí la carta de la comisión de Kennedy, y si esto va a hacer que el proceso resbale, entonces, este, yo estaría más a favor de mantener esto, ¿no? De que, de no hacer cambios. Y este, tal vez soy una de las más nuevas aquí, y estoy aprendiendo mucho, pero al mismo tiempo estoy de acuerdo también con el comisionado Becerra, ¿verdad?, de que si estamos hablando de pagos y eso tal vez puede ser poliza, pero bueno, este, lo voy a decir ahorita en inglés. Yo apoyaría esto que se mantenga igual, o sea, que no apoyaría este, la ordenanza. Y al mismo tiempo diría que lo mandemos al concilio para que ellos tal vez revisen este, el método de pago, faces, como están diciendo. First of all, I want to thank the residents of Santa Ana for being here. I'm probably one of the newest here on the council, so I'm learning, I'm learning a lot. I understand, like, somebody said, you know, we shouldn't change an ordinance just to benefit one project. And I'm with you on the housing issue or crisis, you know, I'm living it myself, trying to find an apartment, because they've increased my rent by $400. At the same time, I agree with what Commissioner Becerra said, that when it comes down to these, you know, deciding on whether we should allow these payments in phases, and I think that also is policy, and I don't know if we should have a say, but I just wanted to mention that, that I, I would not support this ordinance. Thank you.
Commissioner Bow?
Yeah, I, I go back to the, my original comments I made at the prior meeting that we talked about on this matter. And that is, it's always my preference that the developer build the affordable housing. I mean, then you don't have issues associated, like this particular issue. And it's regrettable that the ordinance has written, as we misinterpreted as we read on the line today, doesn't provide for that. I mean, I, I don't like the in lieu fees precisely because it presents problems that we have here. I mean, you have, if you build in kind, you have affordable housing that's in a mix where you want a mix. You want mixes all over the city wherever possible. So I, and that approach could have been taken here. And if it had, then it would have been phased in, then you wouldn't have the problems with the in lieu fees upfront. But I think, I think it was Arseli, if I got her name right, I think she's the one who said, you know, and it struck home to me, you know, we make a contract, you get, you're bound by it. And I think there was a contract that was entered into, a development agreement, and we were very generous. I mean, I, that's what I got to go back to. I mean, I think we did something I don't like, nor normally like to do. We essentially spot-zoned an area on Red Hill that, and provided millions of dollars of benefits to a developer. And, you know, I'm appreciative of that fact that they developed, and I don't want to ever lose sight of the fact that we want to attract development. I mean, we need, after all, housing is a matter of supply and demand. And so we got to be cognizant of that fact. We have to be friendly, although it might seem unpalatable to some people, we have to be friendly to development in the city. So going forward, I think, you know, I'd implore a change to the housing ordinance along the lines I first discussed, that, you know, these developers build it in kind. They don't have an option to in lieu, or if they want to pay the in lieu, then they pay an exor, a fee that's, that's commensurate with that. But I'm not inclined to grant the request today based on the way it's presented.
Commissioner Bow, would you like to make a motion on that?
Well...
Well, so we, yeah, we don't have a second. We didn't get a second on his, so I'll entertain a second, or we could just vote on the recommended action. Okay. So we have a recommended action to recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance approving the First Amendment Development Agreement Number 2015-03 for the Heritage Village Development Project. Do I need a motion and a second in order for us to vote on this particular recommendation? I have that from, anybody on this body? If you can just...
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
You'll make that motion?
No, I won't make that.
Okay, okay. Will you have a subsequent motion? I understand that.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that the city council, that we recommend that the city council deny the ordinance approving the First Amendment Development Agreement Number 2015-03 for the Heritage Village Development Project.
I will second that motion. Do you have a motion and a second? We're going to do a roll call vote?
Do you want to have a second?
Yeah.
Mine, I second it. So do we, do I, should I do roll, do I need to roll call? Okay. Commissioner Becerra?
Abstain.
Commissioner Gardner?
No.
My abstention is because I do not believe we should be voting on the fees.
Commissioner Alder?
Yes.
Commissioner Bow?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
I'm sorry, what am I voting on, on your...
He's, he's denying the record, the...
Oh, I, I vote on that.
Yes. Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Okay, we are going to, thank you, thank you for everyone who attended and was patient through this process. We're going to move on to item number...
Did you vote yes?
What is, what is on the agenda is item number four, which is the Public Hearing for Conditional Use Permits 2016-39. It's on the agenda as item number four, the Conditional Use Permit 2016-39 for Pizza Hut.
Item number four, I don't know if everyone heard, there was quite a, quite a mass accident, access, but item number four, the applicant has requested that it be continued until the next meeting. They need to clarify some issues before coming forward.
Do you want, we need a motion to continue?
Do we need a motion to continue it?
Yes, if you would, continue it to November 28th, please.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we continue this item till November 28th.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay, we're continuing that, so we'll see that item on the 28th. And then we are moving on to what is on the agenda as item number five, that's the Public Hearing for Amendment Application 2016-04.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm here with you this evening for essentially a cleanup of our, of our zoning map. So the request is actually from the City of Santa Ana, and it's to initiate an amendment application to formally update our zoning map and sectional district maps. You have in your attachment the key map here, and as you can see, the city is divided into a number of districts. There's 40 districts in all, and in the municipal code, our Chapter 41 zoning code, it identifies that all zone changes are to be done by these geographic areas, the sectional district maps. So what we've done is we've updated our zoning map and transitioned them from just being graphics to being GIS-based. So this is an example of one of the SDM, the sectional district map pages, and it's now GIS-compatible. It allows planning staff to do more analytical data, for things to be more automated. And the thing I want to emphasize is the amendment application today is to formally embrace these changes, but it does not include any changes of zoning to any properties. So it's very much a cleanup. So the recommendation today is that planning commission, in turn, recommend a council to approve amendment application 2016-4 to incorporate these updates to graphics and such.
Have any questions of staff? Commissioner Becerra?
This may sound a little blunt, but why is this before us?
We, it was requested that we bring it to you so that it can formally make those changes. So while there's no zone changes, it's changing the makeup and the look and the way that it's packaged, so it was...
Perhaps I can clarify that a bit. We have three different maps, and they weren't all necessarily consistent. So what we had to do is go back and verify that each of these, that each of the zones were correct for all those inconsistencies.
We have three different zoning maps?
Yes. Don't, don't ask me. Don't ask me why. Don't follow that question anymore. Please. And so this is, we, we identified all those discrepancies. We went back to the ordinances themselves and determined that this was the actual correct zoning, and on these sectional district maps that you see right now, that can be blown up into a big map or rolled out the, you know, however large we want to have it, but also are available on these pages, which are required by our zoning code. So Chapter 41 says you have to have it in this format. So, and they're all consistent now, and they've all been cross-referenced, and we want to adopt them.
So this is a more of a housekeeping item than...
It is housekeeping, yes.
Or spring cleaning in the fall.
We are cleaning it up.
So we need to then, we need to have a public hearing on this item. So we'll go ahead, what was that? Yeah, I guess, yes, you're correct. So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for the amendment application number 2016-04. Anybody that would like to speak on this item? Please come up, fill out a card. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for comments and motion.
Sheriff?
Commissioner Becerra?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance approving amendment application number 2016-04.
Second.
Motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? All right. Thank you. So we're moving on to the next item, which is listed on the agenda as number six, item number six, Public Hearing for the Zoning Ordinance Amendment 2016-04.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might ask before we begin, I know that this particular item also makes reference of the second unit, or I'm sorry, accessory unit ordinance. Is it relevant to go ahead and proceed with this item at this time, or should this be part of the discussion for the overall accessory unit discussion?
Um, this, yes, it's relevant to proceed with it at this time. The ordinance, we currently have an ordinance for accessory dwelling units. We are permitting applications as they come in under the current ordinance, as required by law. And we would like to establish the criteria... And we would like to establish the criteria for whether or not we underground utilities for those applications. As part of this, the, as Ivan will explain in his staff report, this addresses other issues as well, and it has been problematic for us.
Hello, once again, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Before you tonight again is an Underground Utility Waiver, Underground Utility Installation Zoning Ordinance Amendment Number 2016-4. And just to give you a little insight, our section of the code that applies to this is 41-626, and this deals with any sort of utilities that are provided for any property, whether it's residential or commercial. More specifically, this section applies to underground requirements for having those utilities go on to the property. The zoning ordinance amendment is to help streamline that section of the code, more specifically with single-family residences and construction and additions that we see on a daily basis at the counter. It also deals with second dwelling units, and I'll go over that. I have a table that'll describe exactly what was going on with our previous or existing Section 41626. The next slide here will, I know it might be a little bit hard to read, but I will definitely go into that. So just to give you an idea, anytime that comes, anytime that someone comes in to upgrade a service for a single-family or a duplex, we really don't have that requirement to underground, as long as they provide a dual-function box whenever they do want to underground in the future. That doesn't change. We're still keeping that in mind. For any multifamily residential development, or a commercial or industrial site, we do require that, any change of service, whether they upgrade the panel, or a breaker box, that sort of thing, they provide underground utilities. There is a form to, to apply for relief of that. This is through an underground utility waiver. And I'll go into detail with those things, but the next section there is for an addition in excess of 50%. So what we did is, it was previously 25% for residential homes or duplexes, and we found that most of the homes in the City of Santa Ana were substantially small, where a 25% increase was basically either a master bedroom addition, or maybe an additional living room. And so these people would have to, these residents, property owners, would have to underground the electrical feed for Edison. And that alone was a burden that they were not looking into taking in. So what we did is, we increased the percentage to 50%, which is in line with our major modification review and those sort of things. So it kind of helps streamline the process to developments and projects at the counter. We didn't change it for commercial or industrial. This is just something that we're trying to help streamline residents. Maybe they propose a master bedroom addition to bring in, you know, their mother-in-law, or their mother live with them. And so, the previous code was creating some sort of financial burden on these residents. The last section here, it goes into new construction or relocation of buildings, and so our existing Section 41626 also includes any second dwelling units. So anytime someone would propose even an accessory dwelling, as we know them now, they would have to underground the utility for the main house and the accessory dwelling unit. And oftentimes, what we find is that the process just to find relief was a minor exception, and that alone was creating a lot of headaches and financial burdens for the applicants themselves. So this is the section that applies for second dwelling units, accessory dwelling units. And just to give you a little bit more feedback on what was going on with certain projects and the headaches that we were seeing, is whenever a single-family house wanted to apply for an upgrade in the panel, they would go through our process. Let's say they provided an addition. I'm just giving you an example so you see the kind of things we see on a daily basis. Whenever a property owner wanted to increase their square footage by now 50%, they would have to provide underground utility. So one way to get around that was the application for relief through an underground utility waiver. We find that for certain situations, that wasn't possible. They would have to cross a major arterial street, and so the waiver would be approved. We found that the requirement for second dwelling units, accessory dwelling units, to provide that was just creating too much of a headache and financial burden that some of these projects wouldn't go through. So this cleanup is more directed towards the single-family, the smaller developments, those small property owners, and I think it keeps in line with today's developments that we see daily. So these are the changes that are going on with the section. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. That's pretty much where we're at.
How long would, if they had to go through the exemption process, how much would they delay their project?
So just to give you an idea, let's say even an underground utility waiver, that process, they would apply for the waiver, bring in the submittal requirements. We would then forward that to the building official, and then that building official would assign an inspector, which, as you may know, we're pretty low on numbers at the moment, so that would delay it just for someone to go out there and do the inspection. After that, they would return the application with their feedback and their comments, and then the zoning administrator would make the decision based on the material. That's just for the waiver. The minor exception process is a little lengthier. It goes before the zoning administrator as well, but it would have to go through development review, and that could be anywhere from two to three months. And so these projects could be delayed substantially, depending on, you know, the submittal requirements or the applicant providing that.
So changing it and increasing it to 50%, what would you say the percentage of people would be able to just move through the process without doing the...
We don't really have the numbers, but just to give you an idea, I'm sure that more than 60% or 70, I mean, I can ask my supervisors on that.
That's good, no, that's a good number. Okay, thanks. Commissioner Becerra?
Well, first of all, great presentation, trying to lay that all out for us. I appreciate that, and the chart was helpful. So just to be clear, let's just say there's a lot, no house on it, just a single lot, someone's going to build a house, would they have to go underground with their utilities?
Yes, so that one is new construction. So if, let's say it's a brand-new, single-family house, there's no way around but asking for relief through a minor exception process. And that, once we establish this and we have a chart that would help in-house, then we can help the applicants streamline that process. The section of the code was a little bit outdated in a sense, where it was very hard to understand, very hard to interpret. So making these changes is going to help out not only staff, but applicants understand what they need to go through.
I guess just my concern is that, from what you were describing, where someone's just adding a bedroom, you don't want them to go through the cost of doing it, but if they're at the point of building a whole new house, you know, and again, mind you, it's very piecemeal, but you would think that we would want to try to get rid of some of the overhead clutter and require it to go underground.
Right, and at that point, the underground utility waiver acts as a sign of relief, or an application for relief, but the zoning administrator would apply the same sort of conditions and then thought process than a minor exception for brand-new construction. It's not something, you know, that goes beyond this just for applying. It's something that I even put in the handout, you know, just because you apply for an underground utility waiver, doesn't mean it's already approved just by paying the fee, so.
Right. Perfect, thank you.
Commissioner?
Just for my edification, because I'm just curious. What's the difference in the cost between pulling it underground, and, I mean, is it 50% more, 100% more?
I don't have those numbers. Edison is the one that would come up with those fees, and from, I've been in constant contact with the planners in Edison, and just by communication alone, they let me know that some of these projects would go on standstill for years, because the funds that any resident would have is just not enough for doing underground.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. Anybody would like to speak? Please come up, fill out a card. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back for discussion, and entertaining a motion. Commissioner Bauer?
Madam Chair, I move that we make a motion that we recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance approving zoning ordinance amendment numbers 2016-04 to revise Chapter 41 zoning of the Santa Ana Municipal Code.
Second? Second from Commissioner Aldred. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That's going to conclude the business calendar for this evening, and we can skip over absences since everyone's here, and move on to comments.
I would like to request that we continue the code enforcement presentation today. It seemed like it was going to be a very long agenda, and we might, we will schedule it for one that is a bit shorter.
I don't think anybody has any objections. Thank you. Okay. Do you have anything else that you want to discuss?
No, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Then we'll move on to planning commissioner comments, and I'll start on the side. Commissioner Mendoza?
No comments.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
No comments.
Commissioner Becerra?
Just one thing, just, as I asked at our last meeting, I'd like to have general plan updates as part of, like, a standing item from staff for each of our meetings, even if it's just incremental process or progress. I'd just like to, for everybody to understand what's going on, especially given how much you guys are accomplishing in such a short timeframe. And that's it, thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Just to have a happy Thanksgiving next week. I guess we're off now, and we'll be back right after Thanksgiving.
That's right, thank you. Commissioner Aldred?
No comment.
Commissioner Bauer?
No comments.
Great. Thank you for reminding me, we want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, because we will not be seeing each other until afterwards. So, that's all I have. We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.